I've called the meeting to order. I've got seven o'clock on the dot. And what we'll do is we will enter into the public hearing portion here at the beginning. My name is Trey White, I'm chairman of the Bologna Planning Commission. And I've got a little script here that I go through every time we have a public hearing. This is a little different because it's not a conditional use and everything. It's more of a, it's a subdivision. I had a couple subdivisions tonight. But the purpose of this public hearing meeting tonight is to obtain citizen comments on the proposed subdivision developments that are being presented. We're holding this public hearing as mentioned in section 3.2. Point two of our city of Bologna documents called the Control of Development and Subdivision of Land Regulations. If you're interested, this document can be found on the city website under the Planning Commission tab. All right? So before we get started, I'll kind of give you an idea of how we intend for the hearings to flow since we have a couple of them. First, we'll have the public hearing on the Parkview subdivision. And then we will go into time, then we'll close it down. And then we will go into a public hearing on the Cypress Crossing subdivision. So right now, we are entered into the time for the public hearing for the Parkview subdivision. So first, we'll have a presentation by the developer. The dialogue, so the intent is for that developer to be able to present what they're doing. Dialogue between the developer and the planning commission or the public is minimal if any. It's really for them to just kind of explain what they've got. After the developer presentation is complete, then we'll open the floor for public comments, questions, or concerns. There are a few rules we ask you follow for the public comment time. It's kind of the essence of time of all we're trying to accomplish. But we ask that you speak, each speaker, and if you haven't signed in tonight, we ask that you sign in back here on the back table. But we ask each speaker come up here to the microphone and state your name and address and confirm if they're a resident of Bologna. We'd ask that each speaker keep their time to two to three minutes. And we'd ask that, and it kind of goes without saying, we ask that you be courteous and consider with your language, language and actions. We understand that there may be differing opinions on particular development, however, unrelated behavior is prohibited. After the public comment time is completed, we will then offer the developer the opportunity for any closing comments. A lot of times, there's questions that are brought up during the comment portion. And the developer can come back up and try to answer some of those comments. After those closing comments, we will adjourn the public hearing meeting. And after both public hearing, public hearing times are over, we will have transitioned to what we call our regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. Planning commission, this is not our time to talk. You know, we can just kind of enable for the conversation for the question and answer time. Okay? Also, please note that we're having the public hearing prior to the planning commission meeting so the planning commission can take all comments into consideration once we enter into our actual meeting time. All right, we appreciate your attendance and your interest. If there's any questions that you may have about our process, please feel free to catch one of us after the meeting. And if you have any questions about why we do, or why we do what we did, as far as that, all right? We're here to help answer questions, hopefully get your input, so we can get things accomplished. All right. The first one we will hear from is a developer for the Parkview subdivisions. Mr. Tristan, is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Appreciate you being here for your, say your name, anything you don't mind.
Like Mr. Trey said, my name is Tristan Phillips. I represent Richardson Engineering on behalf of the owner of this project. So Parkview subdivision is located on the east side of Sematary Street, across Mendocino Drive where the vaulted complex is. This project stretches from Sematary, and a small portion goes over to South Church Street. So there'll be two entrances on Sematary Street and one entrance on Church Street. This land is currently owned by the Midas City Residential. So we use those regulations in the city's guidelines to design a lot, lotlets, lot deaths, court benches, setbacks, and whatnot. That's pretty much it. Pretty simple projects, 99 lots. As far as the design, we've almost done the design drawings. There's quite a bit of drainage goes through the property. So we've taken that into consideration as well as the law leaving subdivision, according to city regulations and potential and whatnot. We've put consumer aid to water. We talked to the water department, kind of got our after our water lines and everything like that. Pretty much it. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
If you have any questions for us during the planning commission time, we'll open it up as a folder for any public comment on the Parkview subdivision. If you don't mind whoever's first, feel free to. Yeah, yeah, just come up here to the mic and say your name. And please state your name if you're a resident of Bologna.
Jim Verbus here, going south of Lisbon Street. Only question I've got is, are going to become kind of a buffer area or like privacy fence between the planned subdivision and other property owners that butt up next to it? That's all we.
And what's your address if you don't mind?
In what south of Lisbon? The property behind Hart's.
Yes, sir.
I'm Peggy Parks, and I live at 48 South Church Street. And my brother lives at 46 South Church Street. The property owners and my brother share a driveway. And right now, you know, he works nights so he can be here, and his wife is disabled. So he's concerned about how they're going to use the property right next to him. It used to be our grandparents' property, and right now, it's kind of grown up because it was purchased in the latter half of the summer. So he's concerned about that. My main worry is the drainage. We've had a lot of drainage issues. So 42 South Church Street, and I know the mayor's aware of some drainage we had with the ditch there that drains across the street into the holy pond in Phila Rashkoman subdivision. So that's my concerns, my main concern is what we're going to do with the water. Because right now, you know, it all kind of drains toward us. So that's my concern.
Okay, thank you, Peggy. Any other comments on Parkview subdivision? If not, Tristan, I'd ask that you come up and maybe address the questions that were.
So I can't speak for the privacy fence per se. Typically, in a lot of these subdivisions, they do end up building wood fences along the backs of lots instead of from a lot of the bylaw and stuff like that. Sometimes every house does, and sometimes they don't. I can't really speak to that at this time. But as far as the drainage, I have taken a look at the drainage. We don't have any final numbers yet, but there is, there's quite a bit of significant drainage that drains through this property. There's about 80 to 90 acres to the west of this project, down in Dushter River Drive and in South Water Department. Vault Field area, Port Cemetery, all that stuff drains down to the intersection of Cemetery and Dushter River. Two culverts that cross under Cemetery Road and kind of cross this property and manage through there and come into some box culverts that the city or, I believe that's a state project, this is where they did Church Street, so we have a box culvert there. So all that stuff drains and goes down there. So this project has two detention ponds, just because of the way it drains, it's hard to get all three laid in one central area. So there is a detention pond in that creek, that drain, or that drainage area that drains through the kind of middle of property, I would say. So we're going to extend the natural right of the road coming into that cross. So we'll have a concrete drainage swell on the north side of that road that will go back into a rather large detention pond. And then we're going to regrade that ditch that leaves the detention pond over to the east towards Cemetery Street. So we are taking all the drainage into consideration. We'll be submitting all the plans and the drainage reports that Mr. Foster given a few weeks. And he'll be, he'll be watching all that. He makes sure that we don't discharge any more water before or after than it was there before. So we are taking that into consideration because as civil engineers, you know, there's a lot of things to look at. The drainage is the most important one. So we do take that in the guard and we have worked that.
Do you have any comment regarding the use of the property? I guess that she had been.
So the, as far as coming out of Cemetery Street, there's, that property kind of sits down right there before it gets Cemetery Street. So really, the only thing that's right there against Cemetery Street is our road coming out right there. And there is a driveway that's kind of really close there. We may have had to look at that a little bit more in detail. But there's quite a bit of land on either side of that road, on the north side and the south side, that they're kind of leaving. There's a little bit of green space, you will. So the right of is going to require to be 50 feet, but there's, the property's wide enough to be 50 feet. But it's not necessarily lining up the lots on one side or the other. So there is going to be quite a bit of green space in between those houses. So there's one house on the south side of the entrance and the one house in the north. So lots kind of stop at the back of either of those property lines. So there won't be any really houses even on either side of that road until you get past those initial properties on Church Street. And you can kind of see it on the plaque that kind of comes in, and lots start to kind of roll from the back.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, we will close down that portion of the public hearing for Parkview subdivision. Yeah, Parkview subdivision, I've got a little 711. And we will transition into the public hearing for Cypress, the Cypress Crossing subdivision. And Matt, how are you, sir?
Good, how are you guys?
I'm good.
I'm glad we're not bit or mined. I'm here to present to you as a developer of Cypress Crossing subdivision, just on the corner of North Coker and Highway 64. It entails 264 lots currently since it's designed. We're just asking for when they're approved, again, the construction.
Okay.
That's about all I have.
Do you want to give any, as far as how many entrances or things like that? Just give a little bit of prequel.
Right now, we've got five entrances. We've got four on North Coker, and we've got one coming out of Highway 64.
How many acres is that total?
That partial there is about 62, I think it's about 62 and a half acres, I believe.
That's it? We'll open it up, floor for any kind of public comment. Anybody want to go first? And Gary, how are you?
Doing good, sir. Gary Traubman, eight and a stride at Bologna. So we had some additional questions being that I have not seen the actual plan of lots, how they're laid out, and that's the number of houses. I had several concerns that I was hoping Matt and the city could address, which is drainage slash flood. You know, from being one of Trey, we've had heavy rains and drainage issues in the past there. And by adding that much concrete houses and drainage, how that effect's been studied, looked at, and how it's going to affect other homes in the area. The four entrances on North Coker and one on Main Street, is that due to the layout, which I haven't seen because North Coker isn't that wide? There's going to be a lot of construction traffic. And to add four entrances there, and anybody who lives around here knows it, pulling out on Main Street from Coker, especially during peak times of day, with high school being across the road, it's already a nightmare. Can be a long wait time with that narrow road that's concerning. And then the months, this is from what I heard in conversation with Matt, we're going to be from 1,100 square feet to 1,800 square feet. I've got a question mark on the end of that because I'm not a home censurer. And it seems like the lots were mentioned at 60 by 100 as a whole. Which, I mean, that's just, that's just small. Probably there's no section eight housing in there. That's a serious question. I don't know if that's available or not. And then which company is actually doing the construction? Is it you doing it or Ralsh Coleman? I'm a decoupled a little bit. Is it Ralsh Coleman or whose actual company is building the houses?
Okay.
Because Coke was off in there. And didn't know if the city had any plans to address Coke Road issues with multiple construction vehicles, especially if they're going to build that many houses in there.
Good question.
And I believe that's it.
Thank you, Gary. Anybody else? Yes. You bet, come on in. How are you?
Good. Charles Rupel, I live at number 76 South Mallard. Been living in Bologna for a long time. Some of the folks are sitting here today. I might address the same thing that the other gentleman did, was the flooding. Some of these questions are given me by either my sister-in-law or my wife. And all of you know, y'all is listening now. And so I'm listening. And in one case, I have a sister-in-law that's very anti-alb. She could not come to the meeting, and then still go back and forth. I still have it in for several months. And the other two that I'm speaking for is my wife and her sister. And they, we all have land that's on the eastern side of this piece of property. We didn't go looking for sale, which would have been a nice thing to know. That's, that's neighborly there, I should probably call that. I don't think it was y'all. So the flooding is something that we're concerned about only because the right of way was given primarily by my wife, father, and mother for the right of way for the city to have their sewer line. It runs right across there, it runs along the old, that old creek area that runs along there, and there's a pond that's back there in the back of it. Somebody mentioned about that, probably heard it at any of these conferences. So you don't know what I'm talking about. So we're a little bit sort of stupid about that. Also, how will the city and sewer system affect the drainage that's going on there? That's not a piece that drains easily. I was worried about that. Then I had this question, and this would come from my sister-in-law about the width of Coke Road, because she's concerned about that. She has recently had her son and daughter-in-law build a house on the old house place of the Rides, and she's also built one there. Her illness has stopped her, been removed a long time. And that's why she's not out of here. Next, how does the school system think they can incorporate these families? I'm sure, if you haven't, you folks have talked to them. And I think the builder's already out there. That's the numbers. Because I think you talked about over 300, all built up all together now?
264.
264 plus? Is 199. That's what I'm saying. So that's a lot of folks to be coming into the school system. So you need to take that into consideration at least, and that was the only question she had. And then a similar question to what was asked a while ago, will there be fencing that sets this property off from the surrounding properties? I know some of the property that is to the west of the street has flooded ever since it's been there. And there are no fences, and I don't know about the drainage, and I don't know. I'm thinking if you guys are on the planning commission, I'll override, and I'd have been on it back then, because they've been around for a while. Had a long time going, that wasn't you. Next, what covenants will be implemented to avoid? And I saw this today on that street. Jump cars, boats, trailers, that don't look like they've been moved in four, five months, maybe longer. Could be four, five years for all I know. But they don't look like they're even usable. So what's going to take care of that? What's going to be in the covenants? And then the last thing is the lighting. I have looked at it in some of the new properties that have been built around here recently, but that's certainly a concern. When we've got a home that's probably the closest to that property on the eastern side, and we're going to get plenty of light that we've never gotten any. All the trees are already gone. Before they were all gone, they were sprayed by an airplane that depoliated trees in our yards along their brother. And we haven't really got that taken care of yet, but that's private matters. Appreciate it, Mr. Rupel. Any other questions you might have for me?
I think we're good. Thank you. Next, anybody else?
Yes, sir. So my name is Andy Huntley, I live at 27 North Coker. Hearing about four new drive accesses on the North Coker is kind of alarming, especially since we have kids that live along North Coker. And I don't know if you guys have seen, but that's almost like a drag strip sometimes with high schoolers. It's a straight road, about a quarter mile long. They fly down that road at 40, 50, 60 miles an hour to the one I've already called the city, to have them come in and just try to control it a little more. So that's a major concern there because of the amount of traffic this is going to increase on. The next is the drainage, because my backyard floods all the time because the water goes through that property. Everything from that subdivision feeds through three culverts that go over North Coker through the creek along the sewer line. So I'm worried about all the hard surfaces being built, flooding back into that creek, and then backing everything up. Because we can't push enough water out. The school district is one. The school's already maxed out. Last year, they had to create a new kindergarten class at the elementary school because Bologna is growing faster than the school districts can handle. And then lastly, is the electric. Couple of years ago, when the whole bit mining, everybody was saying, if bit mining came in, it'd max out the power grid. Well, we're talking about 360 homes right now being added. What's that going to do for our power grid? Is it going to start maxing that out to that point? So those are more of my concerns from that standpoint.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right. We'll close down the public portion of that, and then Matt, anyone else you are hearing to come back up and potentially address some of these concerns? I'll try to go through some of them. If you have any additions still.
Aaron Robbins on the body of the hearing, and I tried to take some notes here so I could address all these. The drainage, so what we're looking at doing on the drainage, we're actually going to create that ditch that goes through there. We're going to widen it. We're going to create a series of ponds to slow the water down and to keep it there. There's actually a pot that goes underneath Coker. But whenever, I don't know who put it in, but whenever they put it in, it didn't really ditch it all the way through that existing ditch. So it's, the efficiency of it is lacking. We're going to fix all that whenever we go in there and fix the drainage area. So the drainage areas and the drainage infrastructure should actually improve that whole area in there. Once we connect everything, widen the ditch, and slow some of that water down. The four entrances on Coker, we are doing some high street improvements to Coker. So we're going to end up having to pipe all those open ditches. We're going to end up taking curb and gutter on it, and it's going to be wider. So from the center of the road to the edge, we'll end up having a 13 and a half foot wide lane on one side. The other side, part of it's been improved with some development, part of it has not. So we're actually dedicating a little bit extra right of way along Coker, and we're actually improving Coke Road. State Fire Marshal requires so many, so many entrances per the number of lots. And so the number of entrances and exits that we have meets the state fire code. You know, if you could get rid of one of the entrances, I know that'd be great. We'd love to get rid of one of them. But then we have a issue with EMS and, you know, people's safety. I'll let Matt talk about who's building what and sizes and all that. I can't answer that. As far as the sewer affecting the drainage, the sewer shouldn't affect drainage. Your sewer is typically deeper than your drainage. It's underneath all your drainage, so we're tying into the existing sewer that parallels the ditch. So there shouldn't be any issue there. I can't speak on the schools. Fencing of the property, I'll let Matt, I'll let Mattie enter that in the BOA. The street lots, the lighting, typically city code requires a street line at a street intersection and approximately every 300 feet apart. That's another. But you have sidewalks on both sides of the roads. So lighting is actually a safety issue to make sure that while you're walking on sidewalks or walking down the middle of the street, it's properly lit. So there will be lights. We will have the lights that will be required. Will it affect the power grid? Not an electrical engineer, but I would say no. We will end up submitting this to the electric company. They will do their design, and then they will give that back to us for the contractor to install. Can't, you know, people speeds up down the road, that happens all the time. Can't answer that either. So you got any questions for me?
I'm sure we will. All right. Matt, if you want to have anything else to say.
Yeah, the home sizes that will be built, they are, he is correct, they are from 11 to 18 hundred square feet. And I'm like, Aaron, I can't speak on the schools as far as the default edge of the trees. That was prior to the union property, I had nothing to do with that. Is there a reserve that I've been serving?
Is there any question on section eight housing?
There will be none of that. It'll be, they'll be, the home will be built by the Nord Homes, who is the company that did that, Ralsh Coleman. You guys have revised your building codes a little bit, which I completely agree with. And we are requiring them to break all four sides of the house. That will be in their covenants and restrictions when I meet them property.
Any other comments from?
That's all.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
We are going to, we were going to go ahead and ask your question so we can, please, Eric.
He said the trees were torn down and depoliated, whatever the word was, before he owned it?
All right. We will close down our public hearing portion at 7:27. Cypress Crossing subdivision.
Cypress Crossing, so, all right. We will transition into our, wait, y'all good?
We're good.
All right. I'm going to call us to order for our loan and planning commission, I've got seven twenty-eight PM. Do have a forum. Uh, we have approval of amendments from August. We have not met since August twenty-eighth. To recap real quick, uh, we, public, uh, hearing began at seven PM. Uh, there was a discussion regarding a lot split on South Church. Um, there was another public hearing for a lot split on St. Street. And then there was a conditional use for the, uh, for public hearing for the Francis Area Development Center. As far as that was concerned. All right, there's several folks asking questions as far as that goes. Uh, we've called planning commission to order at seven fourteen. Approved amendments, we had old business to take care of. Uh, there was regarding the daycare project for Watson up there off of the highway. Uh, then we had the barrier project that came before the planning commission at that one time. All right, and see here. Any other questions, comments, corrections?
Motion to approve.
Have motions from Ryan?
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving amendments, present, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We have no old business, so we will start in on the new business. The new first item, new business is the Parkview Subdivision on Cemetery Street. Jeff, or, or who, Tristan, you want some of that? Appreciate your presentation earlier.
Yes, sir, no problem.
When do you think, I'll just ask the first question. When do you think your drainage study would be completed?
Uh, so we're working on that right now, it's probably about seventy, seventy-five percent complete. Um, all the pot, we've sized all pipes and stuff inside the subdivision for that infrastructure, but uh, right now we're currently looking at, um, shore of the extension calculations, looking at those areas and the areas um, of water draining on, on the side and moving inside. So, uh, we should have that and construct a drawing of the tray within the next few weeks.
Okay, so I want to hit pause real quick, just from a, be sure that we're all thinking the same thing. Because we got an email in, it's the planning commission today, and just from a, be sure everybody's thinking the same thing. So Trey Foster reviewed your submitted plan two the last couple of weeks. He provided comments back on November twelfth, right? And I believe you addressed all those comments.
Yes, sir, so the comments that he did, some abbreviation was, uh, some of the street names. Uh, so we changed the street names and some of the suffixes. Um, he had some comments on the, the, just to make sure we were looking at the streets correctly and make sure we were designing those correctly for city standards, which we are. Um, there's one kind of, uh, what we call it, a collector's street, the extension of industrial ground. So that's more of a collector, so it's a little wider than a typical, uh, local residential street. Uh, and then the other streets in subdivision will be a, a local classified, um, so twenty-seven foot line is some of that. Um, the extension of industrial ground, I think we are thirty-four, so have a little wider room.
So you will be improving your half of that cemetery street?
Yes, yeah, we have, uh, we are looking at, um, a widening cemetery street, so the, on, the so, you know, as far as the hatchet improvements, you know, everybody say, you know, maybe four feet or, or whatever, but it's normally an, an average of about six feet on, on how we're looking at this one. And I say average because, you know, we're always kind of handing back and forth as far as any existing asphalt. Try to keep all the curbs and gutters and stuff within a straight line that way doesn't look real bad when you're driving down the road. So on average, about six foot of asphalt and white out of two different curves, and we decided to sidewalk it.
We had certain things over at Saddle Creek, where they have hatchet.
Yeah, and those, and, and they tend to help improve the area a little bit.
Are you requesting any waivers from the control rooms? No waivers, okay?
No, I don't, I don't recommend any waivers on this property. Uh, we didn't have any issues with, uh, with the comments Mr. Foster had, had submitted, and I believe we got all of them addressed. Um, some of those were design stuff, design related, which I sure didn't, we've been looking at. Um, we got those almost wrapped up, we're going through a little bit of red line or deprocess right now, so we got a draft set, but we're not, not quite there.
And one thing that had a conversation there, one be sure that we did amendments at the meeting, is that all subdivisions lighting is in the subdivision is required to be installed by the developer, right?
Yeah, so that, that'll, that'll come with the, uh, like.
And that's a city approved fixture. All right, what other questions, guys? Are you going to have any, uh, as part of, I'm just kind of going through our control of development here. I think on four point, four point two, it talks about, see here. Build assurance for the subdivision, are you going to have any covenants, restrictions on those lots?
Yes, there will be, there will be a little assurance. I'm not sure they have the, all the particulars on that, on exactly what all they're having there ironed out just yet. They'll, I mean, they'll be more ironed out by the time we get to final flat for whichever phase, but there will be a BOA for this particular.
Did y'all have any kind of guides at this point in time as far as what that may look like?
Uh, they, uh, this particular client has done a lot of these subdivisions, so they're familiar with that whole process. And I'm sure they have a draft for them that they kind of use on different projects. But I don't think they ironed out exactly what they want for this one just yet.
My question's, what else? And so show me exactly where your intention is you are going to have this.
I have a big copy that, uh, the street names pretty much have anything to change on here. Hope this is that big copy I've been around here, so there's a good one right here, which I would say probably right about in this area, all this water running through here. And then these lots, and then this off-site area here will drain the dissection. And then we're doing some ditch improvements along this right here. There's a, there's a, this is right there. Yes, yeah, so there's a big ditch goes to the property right on this way somewhere, makes this corner, and it comes down through here. And ends at that box called, right here is church tree, this right here is church tree. So the box called that right here, so we're going to be doing some ditch improvements, um, along the entire property basically. So we'll concrete this ditch here, and then we'll go into the ditch pond, lot control structure, we discharge down this ditch here, and we'll do some ditch improvement along this back line.
And, and you will, that is a regular in line with industrial ground?
Yeah, so industrial ground comes in right here. It's right here, so there's two twenty-four inch, I believe they're twenty-four inch, and maybe thirty-inch RCB pots coming across right here. So I'm going to do the hatchet improvements like, uh, like, and it'll just air, um, or that asphalt pretty good. So that's what we'll pay in this ditch here down this.
Yeah, the Sandlot Street.
Yes, sir.
Is that being left open for future development or?
Yes, so the, uh, same with industrial and Sandlot again. Um, typically, a lot of the time when they, when they stub out to bigger properties, uh, a lot of cities like to have those stub outs for future connectivity purposes. Um, case that, that property there develops, there is a connectivity basically. Um, like Mr. Perrin said earlier, there's fire code, you know, so any time you have, uh, a, a bigger subdivision, more than thirty lots, you have to have more than one entrance. Uh, when you get, uh, quite a bit more homes, you know, there's required maybe more than two. Um, so we do likely those connectivity purposes.
I want to do this question, this is just, I know how much water comes down through there, it's a tremendous amount. We need to make sure we get the good solid hydraulic engineering studies that, you know. So we hope some is a button.
Yes, and like I said, and like I said earlier, you know.
I might somebody.
Yeah, and like I said earlier, as a civil engineers, we do, uh, a lot of variety of things, civil's pretty raw. You know, there's geotag, uh, bridge, structural, there's a, there's a broad, broad spectrum to what is classified as civil engineering. But as far as our side, we probably don't, the drainage is one of those important things to do, so we do focus that a lot, and we take that very serious.
As far as any damage, construction damage to the existing road? You know, from any tra- traffic, that would be, any repairs would be responsibility of developer.
Yes, sir.
That's understood, yeah.
I think so.
We want to have a few different things there, right? If I was going to, uh, just kind of throw it out there, if we're going to make a motion, whatever it is, if he's having conditions to address, what we kind of already just kind of talked about, what we talked about, lighting, you know, we won't have it in there, there was no waivers requested, right? As far as, um, drainage reportedly coming, we want to sound concerned.
Yeah, Mr. Foster, would you add something?
So we'd be motioned with, with the motion approval, like, right?
Put it in upon satisfactory, you know, they're getting care of. And we may want to go back through that listing, that listed, because Jeff and Alan, I don't know, they're going to want to know. Yeah, twist.
The other thing I did not see on.
Go read that.
So I'm curious on this one. Um, there may be something we want to look at in futures, like the mailboxes? Where are those going to be?
Yes, sir, so there's, there's some area, um, along the, the dissection pond areas, some kind of common areas. Typically with the dissection areas, they're, they go all the way to the right of links, so there's a little bit of common space. Uh, so we're trying to spare some out, uh, here and there through subdivision, um, to kind of prevent everyone in the subdivision that you have larger subdivision like this going, all the ones that are like, um, in, in trying to get their mail at, at one time. Everyone, it's like these, get their mail in the afternoon, they're going to work, uh, around five o'clock, so. So we try to put them in a spot or two, that way they kind of sparse out a little bit.
Like part of that retention ponds on industrial ground, that's not an acceptable place for those to.
Yeah, so there's a dissection pond on the south side of the project, and there's also a couple of common areas.
And I just want to be sure of clarification. When I say, when I think of the detention pond, I think mostly dry. And though, and then when you have a big drainage, you can hold water, it's kind of a thing for a little bit. And then so you can, and so it brings out, but it's mobile most of the time, it doesn't hold water.
Yeah, so, so these might, these will hold water, these will be wet ponds, so they'll be over-escalated. And a lot of, uh, especially with big projects like this, A E Q department. Um, so Arkansas Department of Environment, which mandates in, uh, swimming water permit basically, so, um, erosion control, sediment, all stuff like that. So they require those ponds are, are what they call sediment bases, basement, which help track sediment from leaving the site, gives it an area to settle out for the water, uh, to run over, so they will be on rate.
Don't hold it against me, but I'm going to, we're going to put that in the motion as far as pending approval from our city engineer, because he's asked me to make sure that we have dry detention ponds for the develop. Now, that you may convince him differently, as far as when you have a discussion, but as far as that concerns, but no less condition that you did that approval through the, through the city engineer.
I'll talk to him about that, and, and what we could do for the time being, uh, now after the discussions will end, but, you know, it'll have to be over-escalated for our swimming water permit. And that's, that's an accommodation, so they do require that. So a lot of times they still back in over time for the construction of the project. Um, and if not, we can look at maybe coming there and reclaim that a little bit after.
Mary, do you give that with trade?
Well, what we had happen, so everybody know, the, uh, the council had requested it to be dry. Uh, because they've had a lot of feedback on the one pond. Uh, wet ponds tend, in their view, the way that described it to me, they, they're just, you can't keep them up. Uh, people are always complaining about them because we have water and debris and growth around them, so that was the move of the city council and a lot of the staff that we go dry.
So we'll make a opinion upon approval by the city.
And mow it where we can mow.
Yeah, so, uh, all the ponds and areas will start looking at, we'll have three ones out of, so they're, they're.
All right. Next. I've got lighting.
City engineers or hydro.
Hydralic study, and then these ponds.
That's going to go to the, you know.
This, oh.
Yeah, definitely.
You have a concept, it's right now. Do you consider the detention pond part of your drainage study?
Yes, yes.
So we could put that in detention pond, yeah, city engineer. And repair it, cemetery street, rain-related construction damage. They will provide. It says that in the control of development, all of our conditions, as far as in our documents, they got to provide the, uh, as far as their insurance, but the, the covenant and all the other stuff.
So I'm going to cut it a bit in front here, so. All right, so most of the, the preliminary plat, pending approval from the city engineer, uh, regarding hydraulic study and detention ponds. Um, also including the street lighting installed by the developer at the time the subdivision is put in. And also the repair of any road damage done to Cemetery Street during the construction of the subdivision.
I would, I'd like to make an add to that. Be sure we are adhering to the control of development document, design criterion, because they have all the different radiuses in there and all the other stuff that should be part of that anyway. Right, but, right, because we want to be sure there's no waivers in what we're adhering to. We're trying to get better, you know, as we go on in this process. So I'd like to amend the motion to do that. Any opposed? We do have a motion about Ryan. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second, if you don't find it covered, that for more time, Ryan.
All right, approve the preliminary plat, pending approval from the city engineer. Um, for the hydraulic setting and the detention ponds. The street lighting be put in by developer at the time the subdivision is put in. Repair any damage to Cemetery Street during the time of construction. And adherence to our control document for all.
Land.
Lot, land and subdivision.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Motion passes, six, oh. All right, we transition into Cypress Crossing. Aaron, you want to back me up?
We have to tag.
That, all right, so. All right, so. How do you want to handle your construction? Are y'all going to try to come off, come off the main highway?
Yeah, I don't know what the contractor is going to do at this point.
Well, how do you know? Coming in off main highway, et cetera.
So my guys have all been coming in off cokers. My survey crew's been coming in off cokers. They have not been coming in on the highway. Now, I don't know if anybody's been in there clearing trees or any of that, how they can get in there. But, but my surveyors have all been coming in on cokers.
Maybe, how y'all be coming in off, who's not helping somebody over there clearing whatever else?
Yeah, they dropped a, they dropped a machine off, they unloaded it off Highway sixty-four in the Metals. The guy's been driving, it's been dry, so he's been driving through the ditch, we can see his marks where he's been driving off sixty-four. He may have been up and down Coker a time or two, but.
And would you perceive that most of your traffic is going to come in off of sixty-four?
That's the current plan.
Everything on the side.
Everything on the side side, and then on the north side, we're gonna have to use coker because.
So are you looking to develop it all at one time?
We're gonna kind of develop it in phases, uh, but to the public, there's not going to be any phases.
Okay.
Uh, it's gonna kind of go from one to the other.
Okay, so one of the things, uh, I mentioned, because I was looking at this, I called Trey a year or day or so ago, and I think he may have probably reached out to y'all when, uh, because I went back to our master street plan that Kelly had sent. I think the email I had was from twenty twenty-one, and it shows North Coker as an arterial, okay? So now, I don't, I don't see North Coker as an arterial, because you have too many private driveways back out there. As far as, I, I don't look at it. I look at between sixty-four and D and Highway sixty-four, to make it sound, you know, you don't really call it South Coker, but that portion of North Coker, I can see that as an arterial. But I would, I would bring a, I know they have an actual waiver, but I don't know that we want to consider that an arterial road, North Coker, but north of Highway sixty-four D, okay? So what, what's the repercussions to that? Well, when you have lots that back up to an arterial, one, there's highway main streets and everything else, right? But the other thing is, uh, the lots that back up to an arterial are supposed to be a minimum of a hundred and seventy-five feet depth. And they're back to increase the depth of those a little bit off next to Highway sixty-four. I think Trey may have mentioned that to y'all, because I think some over like nine or sixty or hundred and seventy. But I don't necessarily see, because I don't ever see this, you know, too many private drives. Mr. Humphrey did drive, but they just right there, I don't think he wants to have an arterial, but then he's driving, you know, if they ever progress that far. The other thing is, is that our master street plan shows Dennis Street actually extending all the way over to North Mount Olive. And so that north entrance that they have, in my opinion, needs to line up with Dennis Street. And they need to, as part of, you know, one of the conditions with this need to amend their plan to so that that, matches up with Dennis Street extending straight across.
Yeah, I don't even see, where you see that, I don't even see Dennis Street on there.
That's right, that's right.
So it is, you know that that doesn't.
I'm not the bill. So, uh, so the, um, I haven't, I just went back and looked at the, the master street plan, because I was like, I know we had something back in those days. And it shows Dennis Street going from where it is now, all the way over to North Mount Olive. So, and can you speak to that? Have y'all looked at it at all?
Yeah, so Trey did call and we looked at it, and so we'd have to move that north drive about a hundred foot south in order to line up with Dennis. So what we would end up doing, and I haven't redrawn anything, but what we ended up having to do is just kind of do like a little S curve in there to line it up with where the drive is. I mean, we ended up losing a couple of lots, I don't think it's a big deal. The bigger deal is just making sure that, that North Coker is not an arterial road, that it's a, it's a collector.
Would you go ahead and make this go out straight? You may drop this down?
Then that's what I.
All part of that same deal?
Well.
This little stub out?
No, this, this is for fire truck. You gotta, you gotta be, you gotta have that in there for a fire truck to turn around. So what we do, do that.
That's why I'm going back and make that.
Yeah, but we leave that, we have to leave that.
And that one also.
Yeah.
Just for the gentleman, we are, we are a little more privy, because we have, it's kind of like, well, here it's always over here. They had seen everything. So what's your plan for that drainage area? You're, you're planning on having kind of a, a green space area about there, right?
He's got it on his other drawing, we got a little bit of color.
Across some color to try to make it a little easier for everybody to see what it looks like. Yeah, I've got more here.
You're glad. So, so, so can you give us kind of what you're saying? So here's some.
Well, what I'm thinking is, you know, that green space.
Yeah.
It's always seeing the turquoise around. City doesn't, I don't think they're built, city doesn't access or any of this, they're, they never, right? We're gonna dedicate all this green space, see what you've got, we're gonna dedicate all this green space. They don't want to be, they want to.
Yeah. That's why.
That's some sewer line.
So, Ryan also heard that on the reason they're saying that.
Some of the other developments around me, once they get these detention ponds in, they're. City doesn't have any access or be able to access, if they, if they work on anything, there's also a sewer line on there that may not work on. So all that green just going to be dedicated, you guys access all this stuff.
I think we have this in the sewer.
It's got to be everywhere here and being numbers of this.
This is. This way of source. Stancing water. All the way up. We can grab that problem there. I mean, and when it flood, like, I don't know about anybody guarding or anything. It's because it won't, it won't, it won't be problems. Turn the tree down. I mean, I had to deal with that for a year, I think, getting the drainage. And some pretty bad way all that. And they can do, you know, they try to fill this, it's looking. It doesn't stick in. You can actually spill it in. Look, man. If I be called, if I be called, if I be called, I require that for the entrance. I just want to trace comments. We have five members. We stub that north road down, property line, does that count as a sixth entrance? Where we don't have to ask for a waiver for the sixth entrance. Because that would eventually, if the master plan was connecting all the way to Olive, that would theoretically be that entrance. So I just, I just want to make sure that we are trying to, you know, dot all the i's and cross all the t's.
Did we not do that on one of Church Street? I'll be, that one, that one, it stubs out across and stuff. The maximum then, when we can, because this supposed to go all the way out to one of seven or Eagle Street, wherever they're going. Didn't we say that that was part of that, or that's something that's part of.
Since we're studying. Is that not already a scheduled, I mean, scheduled, or I guess we're saying that.
That's all I'm saying.
It's just in Trey's letter, he asked, you know, you know, ask for a waiver or a variance, going back to other entrances. So if we stub it out, does that count as another entrance, even though there's not technically a roadway around that?
And I will say, you know, we have in our code, and I don't know what the decision's here, but you know, we have the minimum distance to have it based on the speed limit, because you don't want too many product or something. Going out on sixty-four. So, um, the, uh. Now, we did have, did have a comment, I saw it in over there, but go, and then as far as trying to control the speed limit, you know, coming into town, because that is, that is a good spot right there, because that get, you know, and I believe that when we talk to Mayor, Carper Transportation, actually they can do a study, you know, does studies on that to actually see if they can reduce the, the speed limit at one time, you work it to down before drive, that part of the town, uh, parts of the highway. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have any control over the speed.
We don't over the highway, but what they will do is, our doc is very strict on what they do. And they'll do a survey and it takes in amount of traffic on the, the US sixty-four and amount of pickle there. I'm pretty confident they'll lower it. Uh, they just went through a pretty good survey here at the school, if anybody drove around, did you've seen all the changes and that was part of it. But I do believe they'll drive at forty thousand.
So, we aren't making these lots up here on the highway, hundred percent about.
Yes, sir. I'm one just.
Okay. Tell you, since they're, are bringing the same thing for the minutes, as far as the light inside being installed by the developer.
Right.
Already working. Okay. Drainage is detention. You, I know the other gentleman was kind of talking about, you know, being dry versus wet, or what, are you, any concerns or can you speak? How far along are you in your drainage report?
So I've got, I've got all the drainage laying out. Um, but when Trey had called about trying to realign some of these roads, I basically, I kind of said, I'm gonna stop on all this until we kind of work out, make sure I've got to the entrances and I have everything done. But my intent was for them to be dry. Will one of them be wet, will we maybe need to get some borrowed dirt out of it to, to fill some lots or something? If the dirt's any good, yes, but like I told you earlier, that's a, that's a, that ditch isn't really like, you know, a ditch that you think of, it doesn't have like a really wide base. So we're gonna widen it out, so we're gonna get some dirt out of there whenever we start widening it and making it a lot bigger. So I'm hoping that we don't have to excavate out, but you know, there is the possibility that we will, yes. I won't know that until I do a final drainage plan, because I've got to do a drainage plan for every single lot.
This part from your plan, I get that. And then any damage to Coker during construction has to be repaired at that point in time? What's a reasonable timeline to get that repaired there?
During construction projects, you know, usually in six to eight weeks, you know, four weeks, depending on the severity of the damage.
Okay. They are going to be asking for a waiver from the arterial on North, North Coker, right?
Yes.
Do we have any concerns on that? You will have, can you talk about, uh, so, gee, would make a, make it, the one question she had along the highway, you see some division, some subdivisions or like to saddle creek, then you're going down the gradient, because you know, they got a fence, well, Holly's got a fence as you go along. You know, so partially you want to have a, like a common fence, common appearance, you see it going down the highway, or do you know the shed and how that.
We don't know the shed, that's not part of our plan currently. You know, most people in this building, privacy fences along, things walk faster here.
Your fence, or the, do you mean like a brick fence or?
That's not a brick, but it's something, you know. A highway.
This is on the highway.
I wouldn't want to see people's backyards that look bad on the city. A town of being much everybody's backyard. That would be the one, the ones that I think it might not be that of the.
What, having common pens along.
Yeah, along the highway.
I agree with Bill. Yeah, I agree.
Some people might not be able to afford to put it across.
There can be a chain link and then six foot and a whole hood and that. That didn't.
That would be a part of the covenant from the subdivision, there won't be some chain fences. That would be addressed one day. Yeah, I don't miss everybody.
That would like sixty-four, it would look better with sixty-four.
Oh, uniform.
It wouldn't have to break quite out.
Perhaps there's something that's very, very.
You know, it's got great color.
It's gonna be commonly as, uh, uniform.
Yeah, sure.
So this is not necessarily, so the pedestrian walkway that's in this subdivision is going to be the sidewalks along the streets. They're not necessarily pedestrian walkway, but I'm thinking, I'm just gonna say like saddle creek, it's got the ditch down the middle. That's kind of similar to what you're referring, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There was a question about who's doing the construction. Do you have any ideas at this point in time?
I've got a pretty decent idea.
Okay, but you said Lennar, somebody said Lennar will build, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be, that is who will build, be building homes.
Okay. And then?
And then I think they'll be a lot better when you guys have provisions for the building codes that exceed state building codes. I think that's a lot better. And then I'm gonna require them to build all four sides of the bridge, not three sides of the side. A little bit of brick on the front and there where that.
Okay. Like coming in the town with these little, pretty nice. Or there was, was there any concerns connecting, like you'll talk to the city as far as connection to utility sewer? I know water's.
Yeah, I've talked, I've talked to Trey, I've got the water and the sewer designed. I guess I'll have this one bringing it together.
Okay. What else? So the only way what you're asking for is North Coker not to be considered an arterial.
A classification of North Coker and if that, if that other stub out is satisfactory to the sixth entrances, then we don't need that.
So that'd be the other way.
Okay. All setbacks, think that nature will be here in solid control. Okay. What other questions, does Mulan, Bob, anything?
I don't know.
Coke, you good? Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Got any questions?
Now, in the way, the thing was, I'm like, maybe it's possible they're highway entrance, but that's, I mean, forgive them, the six there, and that gives us, gives them covered, so.
And two, we have to connect it with Dennis, we're gonna lose a couple more lots anyways, so that six entrance only gonna access, you know, for your one, fifty, it's only gonna access about twelve houses. And it means.
So what, and you said a quick curiosity, you lined it up over here with this side rather than putting it in for center, is there any reason, how you put it all the way down here with the same rather than home for center?
Yeah, because the intersection here, what I was trying to do is.
Trying to get as far away as we could from the.
Trying to give enough, trying to give enough stacking room for cars, to get either house either way, in and out.
We looked at putting it here, if you're getting real, there's the intersection, right, for Quo Hollow, you're getting all the flushes, so we tried to.
Plus, there's a storm drainage right there.
There are probably, there are many paths to go on the road there, and.
But you haven't considered it, and I mean, at least, I wanted to know this.
Yes, yeah, we looked at it, and I've got to submit it to our DOT anyway for their approval. And they may, and they may come back and say, I gotta do this, but I don't think they will, but.
Let's, let's, any contingencies that we got here, contingent on all the debt going on in two weeks. So we're gonna, lining it in, lining it installed, construction, any damage to Coker, on Highway 64, construction damage to the Coker would be repaired by the developer, satisfactory drainage report approved by the city engineer. Here, that, and you take into account your detention, as far as that's, you know, talk to me one, just a little bit more, Aaron, how far, Coker, how, how wide, you say we're approving it on yours, on that side of the, so that would be the east side, right? So what does that look like?
It ended up being a twenty-seven foot, back curving, back curving street, so it would be curving gutter, sidewalks, and then, uh, storm drainage.
Okay, on that side of the road. Do you have any idea how wide it is right now?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I would say we ended, I, I mean, I had two foot of curving intersection, and I think it added another, in some places it was a foot and a half, in some places it was a little bit more than two foot, so on average, you're probably looking at four foot. So, wanted to bring something up as far as Coker goes, on the south side of 64, there's a turn lane. When you come to turn out, sir, there, there's a turn left, turn right, so, is that something we may want to look at trying to do here as well?
That would be, that would have to be a requirement on the city, and we've done the looking, the engineer done it.
Okay. And then there's a sidewalk, so it's all the way down, Coker right down, it looks like on that side of the. And you said, the, Ryan, you were talking about those common mailbox areas, say it one more time, if you don't find this.
We can actually see them on here, so there's.
It's not like a mailbox, is there around, you're talking?
No, it's closer, I don't know why you can do that, I don't know. So there's some here, there's some there, there's some of these in that, or some over here, um, when we rearrange this, I'm probably gonna put one over here as well, I wanted to put one over here, try and get them all, and wait from here, and whenever I get there, I just, storm drainage pop going through there, may have an access going that way, and try to put one right there. So we're trying to, or working through it all, trying to figure out where to place these thirteen degrees.
I didn't even know I built sixteen houses down there, and put a sidewalk, I asked on which side of the road they wanted on, as I said, another thing. We had your house, no, it's up there.
So, looking at large, we're gonna repair, a strange report, the type, how many bits on 64 needs, and where, or, how we wanna word those?
So, they, he's looking for a waiver for.
The five.
To, to consider the east, the east termination of Dennis as one of the entrances, but how I'm gonna turn it.
And then we're gonna rename that, Dennis, correct?
Yes, and, and one of those things, we need to say that the north, the north street is gonna be, it's gonna be.
Martin's.
Martin next to the, Martin next to the line.
And then we can call it Dennis if you'd like.
Yes.
Doesn't matter to me.
All right. And we need to waiver the requirements related to arterial improvements that still would be required for collective, that, right?
Yeah, we reclassify North Coker, or we're asking for a waiver on the classification of Coker not being in arterial.
Correct.
Mr. Coker, I hope you got this.
Yeah, so you can read it back to me. I'll do it, you can read it back to me.
Right? So. What is your, what is your? As far as, the same, like, we, what we're discussing now, I know you've lost the atmosphere, they will do, and will clear things, and you're probably, you're probably that, so are you continuing the work, you continue on your report, what, what are you looking at?
So, when this gets, on my end, when this gets approved, I'm going to finish the design, I'm going to submit it to the health department, get health department approval, also, submit it to the water department and the trade, for them to look at the water and the sewer part of it, along with the health department approval, will submit it to ADQ to get a stormwater permit, while I'll submit it to our DOT to get a driveway permit, and then I'll submit all the drainage regulations to Trey as well. So, dealing with the government, you're probably looking at a couple of months before I can get all those permits and everything put together.
We're just clearing the trees off of it, while the weather's, this year, I'm pretty, apparently, we're not having a winter. You got a question?
What, what's the definition of your arterial, it's, most of us don't understand an arterial road.
Yeah, I stand for, I'll, I'll show you.
Okay.
It's just with the streets and the entrance.
Oh, right.
Their purpose.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions for my guests. The land, um, next to that, you know, the Riley family owns, our fence that we have there now, are our fence that will be left alone, and I want to know how that other road that's gonna hook into that, it's gonna look, um, you know, you say it's gonna stub out there, I don't see how y'all can consider that entrance.
But it's part of the master's street plan, do extend it all the way over to North Mount Olive, we considered that when this, this other subdivision came in, over here.
We don't, don't plan for that at all.
Well, it is planned.
Seven, five years from now, there'll be a plan.
But I want to make sure that where that is gonna stub out, there's not gonna be anybody coming through there, or getting on our land, or how's that gonna be finished out?
Well, that, that's a conversation they'll have, that's, that's.
Although, you're, you're fighting in an arch, or you're fighting in an entrance, so I think that's something y'all would consider.
Matthew, you want to throw this, or how you?
When you do that stub out, that road just goes down here, and just that end, it's your fence, and your fence is safe there, nobody even crosses it once I get it through your hands.
There's, there's multiple instances of that.
There's no driveways off of it, I know.
None of that.
No, but it's up to, you get the fence and say there, but anybody can.
Man, a lot of times, what people will do, where you got the portable jersey barriers, those concrete, um, walls that you see, like on High 57, you can buy them in sections, uh, we were, Bailey's got a new one, because they've been moving them all through Jacksonville, and you have it, right? You pick those up, put them at the end of the street, and you go back and move them. You're not driving over them, you're not driving through them, a lot of people put those at the end of, a, a street like that that stubs out, that doesn't really go anywhere right now, you put those up to keep people from getting onto your property.
All right, any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, so, I'm not sure how many people here want two subdivisions coming in with these many homes, but I haven't heard anything yet from these developers, what are they going to do for the city? What is our incentive to have them come in? I mean, are they going to do anything for the town?
Well, I, what I would kind of tell you is, that property is zoned for this, this is a permitted use in that zoning, and so we are here as part of the, uh, to, basically, we are, the control, we have a document in the city that is the control of land development, as a planning commission, we're here to be sure that they're adhering to that document, because they're permitted to do this.
They may be permitted, but it's up to you, okay?
Well, that, we're okay in their design, for, that they're adhering to the design parameters that are being established within the document.
Well, what, what's the, what's the incentive for the towns goodwill of having these two developers, bringing in all of these homes, increasing our traffic, making the roads that much worse, maybe unsafe unless you widen it and add turning lanes?
You know, the, I, I would, I would much rather talk to you about that after, as far as that goes.
I got one more question, then, individually, these plans may be acceptable, you know, with the traffic and stuff, but combined, it's gonna be a lot of traffic through the town, is there any plan for expanding or winding, you know, adding lanes to the, to the road, or stoplights, or is anything of that, essentially?
So I think that's.
There's gonna be a lot of traffic.
Yeah, I think that's a question you should try to take up with the city council, and as far as, we do have plans from a planning commission.
The, uh, our DOT was here a year ago with an engineering firm, and they have, they're in the process, they've not heard back from them yet, on 107 and Highway 64, that was already an issue long before this, um, Faulkner County's the fastest growing county in the state, and we're already one of the, uh, tenth fastest growing cities, and we did take the impetus to go ahead and get with our DOT, kind of, out of line here, but they, they sent five engineers, we spent a day with them, and they're here studying the traffic patterns on 107 and 64. They were already doing that.
All right. Anything else? Anyone like to say? Anybody want to make a motion, or, or do we want to vote this, or, or do we want to do here?
Some comments motion, that we want through the preliminary, last.
Okay.
Two, we're gonna need to, just, just, trying to, give them a waiver on the collector, street, street, pretty much, lights, construction.
Or construction. Or construction damage. Drainage detention, in the common face along the.
Common fence, yeah, the common fence.
I haven't think at all about it.
Trade officers, their final approval, and this is preliminary.
And then there's one.
Something else I need to?
So I'm gonna read this on the back, so, this is, this is what I'm gonna read back, motion made by Charles Coker to approve, one day, plat, give waiver for streets, pending approval from city engineer, uh, need to say for arterial improvements. Cause you want, you, how do you term, you term it better than what I did here?
Yeah.
To, to, to change the classification from a arterial to a collector.
Okay, and pending approval from city engineer, hydraulic study, detention bond, street lighting installed by the developer, kind of, construction, and repair of any street damage to North Coker caused by construction in subdivision, and adhering to our control documents for land in subdivision, uh, also waiver will be requested for, uh, Martin Road to line up with Dennis, to be renamed Dennis. Anything else? Do you have a motion, Mr. Coker?
I'll say.
I have a second, Mulan. Any other further discussion? All those in favor of permitting the permanent Mary Platt as described in the motion for Mr. Coker, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Thank you, permanent Mary Platt passes, appreciate your time, guys, thank you, Karen. All right. Going on to now, since Mayor, do you have any announcements?
I do not, sir.
Okay. All right. Uh, we will, uh, I do not know of anything else, or know of any other items that, uh, or one item that may be on the agenda for next month, I don't know, which, I'm gonna be sure, my daughter's holiday, comes to Christmas, we will, uh, figure that out, uh, next month, and, or, other, no, any other questions? We are adjourned at 26 PM, thank you.